Okay, I'll call a meeting to order. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, your worship.
We could stop the frivolity over here, there's too much frivolity. Oh, sorry. Mr. Clerk?
Item one is the minutes of the public hearing held on Monday, June 26th. Recommendation to approve.
Move by Councilor Asmussen, second by Councilor Towner. All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Item two is the minutes of the regular council meeting also held on Monday, June 26th. Recommendation to approve.
Move by Councilor Marsden, second by Councilor Zerillo. All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Item three pertains to official community plan amendment by law number 4742. This is a text amendment to the citywide official community plan by law number 3479. Staff recommendations that council gives second, third, and fourth and final readings to see Coquitlam Citywide Official Community Plan Amendment by law number 4742. The council adopt by resolution the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center Concept Plan and the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center Street Safe Guidelines, which are included as attachments 3A and 3B to the first reading council report.
Move by Councilor O'Neil, second by Councilor Asmussen. Councilor Reed?
I have two things that I will support the plan, but I have two directions that I wish to go with it. One, we have discussed new concepts, new building concepts up on the hill. And as usual, we have designed this down to the blue awnings and yellow doorknobs. And I really think that we get a little too prescriptive sometimes. But I would hope, and I believe the answer to this would be yes, and I guess to Mr. Fuji, two things. One, well, one thing for you is that new concepts would be welcome as the years go. And I guess that's a yes, is it? Okay. And to the applicant, I would ask that if you have other lands that are adjoining the lands for this village, that we make sure that we have room to expand the village should we find that we may need to. And that would ensure that we hold on to some of those lands that are immediately adjacent to the village until we can at least get a couple of anchors in there, one being a grocery store, I would suggest, would probably be the largest anchor, and the other one being our rec center, which would, I believe, those two could be the beginning and the impetus for our building. And that would give us a very clear indication of what we would have. So if I could have your comment, Mr. McIntyre?
Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, thanks, your worship. Just very briefly, I believe Council Reed's nailed it. Those are two really of, if you want to put it in a shopping context, those are the anchors. You need those there as the attractors. And plus, they will be substantial buildings and spaces taken up with that. So I think once you've dealt with those, much of the rest will fall into place, so absolutely.
And the extra land, the adjacent lands?
I believe staff from Strategic Initiatives Department have made note of that. And I think, again, there are a lot of opportunities, both north and south, and to the east, too, that if market conditions and demands change, there's an ability to be flexible and to adjust.
Thank you very much.
Got a couple of questions myself and a couple of comments. One of them related to something related on the notification side. I remember one of the speakers suggested that the council news hadn't made reference to the Partington Creek Neighborhood Concept Plan, and yet I had thought I'd seen it in council news. And I, so I've asked the clerk, and I wondered if the clerk could explain how that, what happened with council news on that.
Thank you, your worship. As members of council know, and many members of the public, we're quite pleased with the number of people who have subscribed to our council news listserv are aware, every Friday afternoon, we sent out a message which contains both the agenda and links to the underlying or supporting staff reports. We also do the same for public hearings. The public hearings one go out further in advance, they do not go out the Thursday before. The agenda Thursday before, we'd noted on the agenda, and you see it here as item three. But for public hearings, we send it out, in fact, 12 days in advance, and that coincides with the day that we put it up on our website. And so the council news for this public hearing would have gone out at June 28th at 11:44 a.m. And the first item noted there would be the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center as an item pertaining to by law number 4742. So it goes out further in advance with the idea that we want to make people aware as early as possible so that they can take the time to become more informed. And it coincides, again, with the mail out of the letters so that the information is being broadcast as widely as possible at the appropriate time and collectively so that people, there's no asymmetry of information.
Thank you, that helps. We always do try to, I think we try our best to make sure both that we consult as broadly as possible, but also that we inform and notify as broadly as possible, as reasonably possible, on all these kinds of issues. I'm, I have, I've had my concerns related to the size issue on the Neighborhood Center plan. I will accept the consultant and the staff's recommendation on this one, but I will say that I, like Councilor Reed, I'm probably wrong because I'm not an expert in this, but it seems to me that we should be allowing that we could be more flexible on the edge. I've also said before that I think, oops, I might have said that, closed. Okay. I think it's a principle that you want to make sure, if you're the landowner of residential land, you make sure that as much as possible amenities are in place as you, so that your, the value you get out of your land is as much as possible because the amenities are there. So it may well be a smart idea for the neighbor, the owner that, the landowner that owns the neighboring parcels, to hold on to them a little bit as the commercial is built out, to hold on to one or two of them, so that the facing street may well have a mixed-use component, that there could be retail on the facing street. Right now, we see retail on the, on the inside of the perimeter streets, but not on the outside. And it may well be that that is the compromise, that we end up with elements of that facing land get held back a little bit so that we understand exactly how the take-up is on the commercial. I think we actually end up with more commercial here than we would if this had been a private developer, and I recognize as an expectation that we will do things to the best interest of the community rather than the best interest of the developer. The challenge is that whenever we allow market forces to do this kind of stuff, for example, we end up with a lot of nail salons in our city center here because the landowner that's selling these strata parcels sells them to whoever buys them, not trying to create a good mix, but trying to sell his stuff. We, as a landowner, have a much greater interest to make sure that we build a community center that is vibrant, a community center that is compact and has the core excitement in it, that will really create a really wonderful place for people of this neighborhood and perhaps even other neighborhoods to come in and partake. So I'm going to support this plan amendment, and I'm going to look to staff to contemplate as we move forward with these developments, exactly the edge that we're, we should be trying to put forward. Councilor Marsden?
Thank you. I'll start by agreeing with Councilor Reed with regards to some of the, some of the design components. I think we do need to remain open to new ideas. It's, some of this is going to be several years down the road before construction starts, so, you know, things may have changed, new design elements may be available. So I want to keep an open mind to that. I look at this entire area, and I struggled at first with, you know, looking, saying a smaller commercial component. Is there a need for the larger segment? So again, it's similar to Councilor Reed and the mayor. I think we've got the experts saying the smaller footprint can work. I also look and say we've got about 100,000 square feet in here that we're setting aside for recreation facilities. That's, again, that's neighboring lands to this, that if our rec center, our community center, doesn't need to be 100,000 square feet, and depending on the type of things that go in there, there could be the ability to look at that. Or an interesting design with a community center that might have some retail components around it. So there could be the ability to expand. So I can bring my way around to accepting the smaller amount of commercial space. I think it still make, can be, make it very attractive. The piece I do like about the smaller component is less Neighborhood Center also means less density in terms of less potential for mid-rise towers. Not something I'm a huge proponent of in this particular area, and I would want to see a lot of them. So to look and say, you know what, this would create more opportunity for townhomes, which this is, this proposal would allow for that, I think that's something that the community needs, I think it's something the Metro Vancouver needs. And so this creates, you know, an area that will have a higher number of townhomes at the expense of perhaps some mid-rises that people further up the mountain might not like the fact that they're staring at high-rises so close by, or mid-rises being 10 stories or whatever. So I am going to support this moving forward. I think it's important that we, we do move forward with it. I think it's important that we try to identify how and where we can bring in these community amenities, because this is an area that is becoming quite populated. And we've got to do our part in trying to attract the amenities in terms of the commercial space that's right in the area, whether it be that corner store, the grocery store, those anchor tenants. And I've had some discussions with some of them, it's, I think it works. To some of the folks that showed up and expressed some concerns, we heard people say it's not dense enough to make it work, others have said it's too dense to make it work. I think we can make it work. I think the trail system that's included in this and all those other components in this whole Partington Creek, I think, enables us to access the greenery, which people have moved up there for. So I will support it, and want to thank staff for all their work on this file. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Asmussen?
Thank you very much. I live in Burke Mountain. I've been there for 27 years, I've been part of the ratepayers, and been involved in the OCP from the beginning through the different phases. And the Village Center was always one of the ideas up there. And there's a lot of debate for years about whether the Village Center would ever be built or be viable up in that area. I look at the plan and all the work that this staff, council, and the public have gone through, and I think this is an exciting plan for the Village Center for up in Coquitlam. You take the central spine, you take all the other amenities, the trails, the cycling, all that that's built into this plan, I think, really is going to be the plaza, the step-down, the parkway into Fremont Park. I think there's, the views are going to be out there to be spectacular. I also look at the plan on the Princeton Avenue, and you have the continuous commercial retail, commercial marketplace, but you also have the extension, where we talked about this in council, the, was also considered flexible, live-work residential, which could be turned out of that into more commercial space for stores. The big things we want to make sure is we want to have a commercial area that's vibrant, that's tight, that you're not having an area of no stores or stores turning over. Retail is changing a lot in the last number of years, and is making it more difficult with the internet, direct shopping. A lot of different types of stores are closing up and can't function in this world. So we have to be very careful. And I will rely on the experts that have looked at the trends, the future trends on retail space and what's going to be available up there. But I want to make sure that that street, and Princeton Street, is a vibrant, successful area before we expand it out. This is going to be key to us moving forward up there. And I also think you have to look at the realities of the competition that this will face. The reality is that we have the big box realty in Poco, at Oxford, at Sherling, with the Walmarts and everything, and regardless, people will drive down to those areas to shop for those bigger deals and be coming back. And so that is going to put pressure on this area. And then you have Prairie and Coast Meridian, where you have a commercial grocery store and shopping, that's competition for this area, where some people in the lower part of the mountain might be quicker for them to go down into that area. So I think staff and the experts, and the industrial, the industry experts they talk to have taken that all into consideration. And I think at this stage, I think this is the right size for the Village Center to make it successful for everybody. As the mayor said, I would hate to see us have a bunch of just hair salons and nail salons and everything taking up the whole area. No.
I didn't say it's a bad thing.
But it, I really, I'm going to support this moving through. This was the one area that, as I think Mr. Fuji pointed out, we passed the Partington Creek mask, the plan for the neighborhood. This is the one area that we left out for further detailed study through strategic initiatives. It was sort of a place marker on there to more refine it down to what we felt would be viable. And we want to have a, an area that's going to be energized, an area that's going to be exciting to be in, and the businesses in that area are all going to be successful. So I think, I'm excited about this, and I think this is the right plan. I applaud staff, the consultants, and all that work done. I think there'll be an excellent plan moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor O'Neil?
Thanks very much. A lot of the comment and discussion tonight centered on the size of the Neighborhood Center and the mix of housing, residential, and commercial buildings. But a big part of what we're doing tonight is approving the center concept plan and the street safe guidelines and everything. And I just, I really want to say that regardless of how long the street is, or how high the buildings are, what we're seeing now in the sketches and the architect's vision is pretty exciting. To find a long street like that, that's virtually level, in the center of it, opening into an area where there's going to be a tremendous public square and a couple of little covered performance areas, stepping down into a beautiful green area that is gently sloping downhill, having a southern exposure. It's going to be quite a lovely place. And so I want to congratulate everybody who has, had worked on that. Now, on the, the bigger issue that's for us tonight, I'm going to just talk about one comment that one of the speakers made tonight about, it seems like this is a freight train that's underway and can't really be derailed. And you know what, there's, there's some truth to that. And, but there's a reason there's truth to that. And it's because of the hundreds or thousands of hours that staff and the outside experts and consultants have put into this, and definitely the scores of hours that council has spent asking questions about this, getting answers, other refinements that have come forward, all the consultation that's gone on, and all the expert advice that's, that's gone into this. By the time it comes to this public hearing, yeah, it's got a lot of momentum behind it. And I'm not an expert in urban planning. I've certainly seen the results of bad urban planning, when, when some councils have decided to allow a building to be built somewhere and it sits empty or badly underutilized for a long time, or when there's debates between the builder and the city on stores and how they should be used. Anyway, there's, there's examples all around the Lower Mainland. But I, I'm in a position where I have to take the advice of, well, if I'm being reasonable, of expert opinion that seems on its face reasonable, and the research has been well-done, of an expert staff that has been working on this for a long time, where, so it, still, we always maintain, if this is a freight train that we're riding, and I think it is, we always do maintain the option, though, of pulling that switch to put us onto a siding or to change direction. And we could do that now, but I'm not prepared to do that, because I think the freight train that we've been on, on this for a while, has been headed in the right direction, and nothing I heard tonight persuades me that we should change direction, or throw the brakes, or pull over to a siding, or anything like that. I think this is the, I'm persuaded this is the right thing to do. There's enough flexibility going forward in this as well already. None of this stuff is ever written stone, and I know that putting the other hat on, the strategic initiatives, developers of this, the city owns this land, and they'll be very sensitive to any changes that are needed as well, and other part of City Hall will hear about it and eventually get to us if there has to be other changes made as circumstances dictate. So as a, as a plan, that's, I think it's a very good plan, and I was pleased to be able to be the one first out to say that I moved this, because I am supportive of it. And I'll blow the whistle on the train and say, we're on our way. Thank you. But I actually won't, I just metaphorically did, by pulling down on an imaginary whistle lever.
Councilor Zerillo, please save us.
Get him a whistle. Get him a whistle. So I too want to say thank you to staff for, for this, and I really appreciated the methodical way that we came to the idea that some changes were needed in the city, in the Neighborhood Center place. My challenge is around the timing of amenities that will come in relationship to decisions that we're making today. So as I mentioned, I really want to get an understanding of who lives on Burke Mountain and their behaviors in comparison to the rest of Coquitlam. And although that may have been some of the information that the consultant used, I really would like to wait until the census data comes to understand what's already happening on Burke Mountain and how people are living. It was mentioned today, something about Whistler Village, and I think that we did determine last time that this is really going to be a center for local use, not for tourism. So it really needs to play to what are the needs of, of the community there on Burke Mountain, although there may be some people from the south that will come up there. But one thing I do know from my career in market research is that young families shop very differently than those families without kids, or even in the middle life stage. And I think there's a lot of young families up on Burke Mountain that will be driven by price, that will go down, as Councilor Asmussen talked about, to the box stores that are lower down there in Poco. So I really need to understand these people before I could, before I could feel good about saying yes to this plan. And the things that I've heard from the Burke Mountain community is they want a coffee shop, they want a pub, and they want a rec center for the kids. And there's a whole lot more here than those three simple little things. So I'm sorry to say, even though the freight train is, is on the road, I really think that it's premature for us to approve a plan like this. And I'd actually like to just see it be deferred until after the new census comes and we get a really good understanding of who's living there and how they're living and what their needs really are. So I'm not sure through the chair, I'd like to put that forward as a, as a motion to deter, defer this acceptance of this plan until after our staff has had the opportunity to see the new census and household survey data and to analyze it in relation to the needs of the Burke Mountain community.
Okay, that would be the, the same as defeating it, because we, having had the public hearing, if, if that had been requested during the public hearing, that we not consider it until we got the census information, then, then we could have received it. But we're, we're kind of stuck in this limbo right now, that even if someone in the audience had the information available to us, we wouldn't be able to, to glance at it, because it's information that's beyond the public hearing. And not to be flippant, but if, for one of your comments, if the train is in fact on the road, perhaps it's in the wrong place and we should stop. Sorry, that was obscure, but, so, yeah, the motion, it wouldn't be a motion to defer, well, a motion to defer would have the same effect, because we wouldn't be able to receive any further information without restarting this process and having another public hearing.
Which I would be okay with.
I'm not, I'm not speaking against that, I'm just saying that that's the consequence.
Okay. Well, can I still put it on the floor and I see if we get a second?
Motion is to defer. To, until we get census, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a seconder? You can't speak to it unless you second it, or unless someone seconds it. Okay, it's been seconded, and I assume at least for discussion. So we're going to start a new queue and press your button, and there's Councilor Reed on Q2.
Well, I listen with interest at what you've just said, but I feel differently. One, I was here at the beginning. Two, I have watched this thing grow over the many years. Three, we have been selling properties like crazy on Burke Mountain for the last little while. Or it has been the liveliest place in town in going up and trying to get schools in, in position. And the folks that have been working up on Burke Mountain, like some of the folks that spoke tonight, have given us so much information about what the kids are, how old they are, what schools we need, how many of them won't even ever go to school on Burke Mountain, will end up going somewhere else. And so I think we got good information that way. I think we, I think we also have just gone through a master parks plan. And within the master parks plan, I know Mr. Aloava, he's nodding, he also, they went through in the parks plan, the kind of facilities that would be needed, and in order to determine that, they have to know the type of people on the mountain. Do we have kids? Are they little kids? Are they big kids? What are they doing? What's the seniors population? And on it goes. So I'm feeling quite confident about that part of it. The part I'm not confident about is, and I've been very open about this, is, is about when we sort of start building the biggest rec facility, and I want to build it along with the anchor tenant and start moving it forward, I guess, in one more big car on the freight train. But I want to move that forward, because that's how we're going to get the impetus built, and that's how we're going to need, if we do need extra commercial space, we know we have it adjacent, and if we don't, then we're the right size. So I'm not, I'm not too concerned about the fact that we don't know who lives on the mountain, because I think we've had staff do a lot of really big master studies up there, and I'm confident that we do know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers to the motion to defer? Seeing none, I'll call a question on the motion to defer. All in favor? All opposed? Motion fails with, Councilor Zerillo in favor. With Councilor Wilson, Councilor Marsden, Councilor Towner, Councilor Asmussen, Councilor Reed, Councilor O'Neil, and myself opposed. Motion fails. Back to the main motion, and Councilor Zerillo still has the floor. Oh, okay. And after Councilor Zerillo was Councilor Wilson.
Thank you. First, I really want to thank everybody who came out tonight to talk about this. You know, we, we try very hard to, to engage in the best consultation we can, and the public hearing is just one form of consultation, but we really appreciate people coming out and letting us know what they think. I think we need to do, continue to keep working on doing as, as good a job as we can to promote consultation opportunities. This plan has been, over two years in the making, there's been a huge amount of opportunities for public consultation, and often on something as complicated as this plan is. Public hearing isn't really the best place necessarily to provide your input. It's much better to provide it much earlier on in the other opportunities for consultation. So we'll keep striving to do a better job on that. In terms of Councilor Zerillo's thoughts about deferring it until we have the census data, I mean, I see the merit in that, but I also think that there's so much flexibility in this plan in terms of what will go in to the commercial area, and the rec center for that matter, that we need to get going on, on planning this and starting to put the density in around it so that we can get going. And at that point, we will have all the information that we will need, I'm thinking. In terms of density and all the changes that have happened to the OCP, you know, the market in, in the Lower Mainland has gone completely the, the market in, in the Lower Mayland has gone completely different than most people would have thought it would have gone 10 years ago, five years ago, even three years ago for that matter. And I think the, the changes that we've made have responded to those, those changes in the housing market, and especially, you know, everything that, that we're hearing now from, from people from the whole political spectrum, all walks of life, is that we need more town housing. And, and I think in this area, it makes a ton of sense. What we also heard from the, the retail consultants was you need more density around the commercial area to make sure that it's successful, and, and that's what we're doing. Counselor O'Neill expressed it very well when he talked about the freight train and, and how it's been a very long process. And all the questions that, that were asked tonight and, and a million more were asked by us on council throughout this whole process. And it took a long time for a lot of us to, to, to get to this point. And so, it may sound like sometimes we're not listening to what you're saying, but please, please rest assured that we are listening, we had the exact same questions and concerns, and through the process, we were able to get those questions answered. And unfortunately, like I said, at a public hearing on a plan this complicated, sometimes it's not possible to get all those questions answered. You know, in terms of, of it being farther than the original commercial zone, I looked at the map, and according to the legend, it looks like it's about 200 meters farther. And in some cases, that can be a huge distance, and in other cases, it's, it's insignificant distance for some. But like it was talked about earlier, you know, it was deemed to be the flattest, most conducive spot on the, on that mountain for a commercial zone. And so, yes, we could have moved it further west, and it would have been more hilly and not nearly as conducive. We're always going to have to have those trade-offs when you're building on a mountain and you're trying to make the best use of the land. One of the, one of the questions I had early on, I live in the older part of Coquitlam near the Como Lake Village Mall, and as much as people hate the Como Lake Village Mall for the parking, I love it, because I can walk there. And there are days where I go to the Como Lake Village Mall, and I go to 10 different shops. And I was, I was assured early on in this process that this neighborhood village would be better than the Como Lake Village Mall, much better parking, better, better, better variety of stores, and a much more beautiful area. And throughout the process, I, I've been very convinced that it's going to be an amazing village center. So, quite excited about it. Like, like we all talked about, we had a lot of questions, a lot of concerns. I think all of us have, have felt very comfortable with it now, and really looking forward to moving it forward. And we will continue to try to improve our notification and our consultation processes. Thank you.
Well, it certainly is hard to imagine it having worse parking than the Como Lake Village Mall. Counselor Towner.
Thank you. I want to just start off by thanking staff for all your hard work on this plan and many years and hundreds of hours of work. And I also want to thank every member of the public that took the time to come to a public information session, send us an email, and come out tonight. We value everybody's input, so thank you for that. One bad thing about speaking last is some stuff already gets spoken, so I will try not to repeat myself. Somebody tonight mentioned that we don't even have a coffee shop on Burke Mountain. Well, I want everybody to know that the city tried and tried and tried and tried and put in incentives and all sorts of things to get a coffee shop up there. None would come, because there wasn't the, the market, enough population to, to make it worth business sense. And I want the commercial space up there, I want all the retailers to succeed. And I also, Chris beat me to this, but I live in the, so I was reading emails tonight during the public hearing, and one of them said that this will be about, 100,000 square feet is about the same size as Como Lake Village. And I was thinking, is that big enough? And then I thought, well, you know what? That is a really, really successful piece of commercial space. And there's a grocery store, a fruit and vegetable stand, a bakery, there's beauty hair places and nail places, there's health, there's dentists and massage, there's coffee, there's banks, there's a vet, there's liquor. I, I go there too, and I can get 10 things done, and I'm done, I'm done. I mean, I can't go to the big box, but, so, and that doesn't have the sense of space and the, the views and the, all the other beautiful amenities that are going to be coming along with, with this Partington Creek plan. So, if we get the right mix of, of retailers in there, 100,000 square feet should be more than enough to serve the residents up there for those basic, for what's needed. Maybe throw in a bike shop or things that are, you know, more unique to Burke Mountain. And I, I really want it to be vibrant and successful for everyone. So, there's, there's another mention of Como Lake Village. What else did I want to say? But I also, to what Counselor Reed said earlier, if, if it ends up being that we do need more commercial space, I, I do hope that we have room to expand down the road if we need to. I also wanted to just mention that someone else who spoke tonight alluded to secondary suites and how they'll just add to the population that we're not aware of. None of the housing that's proposed here allows or is built for secondary suites. Town housing doesn't allow secondary suites, so that, that can't happen, so I just wanted to correct that. And it will be less dense than originally planned, and I, like Counselor Marsden, am happy that there won't be the low, the mid-rises. So, yes, the plan changed over time. That happened because of public consultation, market changes, single-family homes aren't really in high demand anymore, we have to densify for affordability reasons. And I think that's about all I want to say. I think this plan is beautiful, it's very well thought out, and I think it's going to be a wonderful amenity once we, once we get there. I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Okay, that's the last speaker. The question is second, third, and fourth. Readings? All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Zerillo was opposed, the motion carries. Counselor Asminton.
Once again, I'll excuse myself for perceived potential consequences close to my home. Don't forget me, Jay.
Remind him.
Remind who? About what? Okay, we'll clear that. Mr. Clerk.
Next item, item four, is zoning amendment by law number 4699, pertains to the properties at 3473 Wilkie Avenue and 1238 Burke Mountain Street. Staff recommendations, council gives second and third readings to seek Coquitlam zoning amendment by law number 4699.
Go by Counselor Zerillo, second by Counselor Marsden. All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thanks for coming back. Mr. Clerk.
Next item pertains to zoning amendment by law number 4766, and the properties at 518 and 520 Poirier Street. As the mayor mentioned, I'd like to add what I will call a new recommendation one, and that is that council amend Schedule A by law number 4766 to change the addressing on the map, and this is proceeding south to north, from 524 to 518 and 524 to 520. Recommendation two is that council give second and third readings to seek Coquitlam zoning amendment by law number 4766.
Okay, these are moving both then. Moved by Counselor Asminton, second by Counselor Zerillo. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Item six pertains to fourth and final reading to litter and desecration prohibition by law number 4762, and by law notice enforcement amendment, litter and desecration prohibition by law number 4783. Staff recommendations, the council give fourth and final reading to litter and desecration prohibition by law number 4762, and fourth and final reading to by law notice enforcement amendment, litter and desecration prohibition by law number 4783.
Move. Go by Counselor Reed, second by Counselor Asminton. Counselor Zerillo.
Yeah, just a question to staff about enforcement. I'm just wondering if there is any plans for any additional enforcement as these changes Especially, I guess, around the Skytrain station.
Thank you.
Mr. Dumont.
Through, through the mayor. We don't have additional staff that we've hired this year to do enforcement, but we are aware of the Skytrain stations and the new people patterns in the community, so we are mindful of that and are doing patrols as best we can within the existing staffing complement.
Okay. Any chance for next year, or are we thinking about that for next year, to add some additional resources just for enforcement? Or could that come in the budgeting process?
That, that would be something that would be appropriate to come through the fall budgeting process, but I'll have those discussions with our bylaw enforcement area.
Okay. And then my last question is just about, it, it doesn't necessarily call out cigarette butts as litter, although it does talk about litter. Do you think that community understands that cigarette butts are litter? Do we have any data on that, or?
Mr. Dumont.
Yes, I believe they do. And in our report on the first three readings, we did specifically talk about it in the report, that cigarette butts are litter. But clearly, cigarette butts are litter and would attract a, a fine if people are caught throwing cigarette butts on the ground.
That's wonderful. And is there an opportunity to send out, I think, will, will a press release happen on this?
I don't believe we had planned a press release on this particular bylaw, but I could talk that over with our corporate communications staff. And we have done a lot of recent work with respect to cigarette butts and those sorts of things, but we can certainly look at putting out a release as well.
And, and I think it might also be beneficial just to let the BIA know, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, just so that they can let their members know, because I think it'll be of interest to them.
We, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Towner.
Thank you. I have a, I have a couple of quick questions. On page three of the report, under 6.2, in offenses and penalties, I'm just curious, it says here, upon summary conviction to a fine not exceeding the maximum set out in the Offense Act. Does anybody know what the maximum is? How much that is?
Page three of the bylaw?
Oh, page three of the, yes, of the bylaw. Is it 500?
I, I believe that's $500.
Okay.
Under, I thought that was under summary conviction. Would it be higher than? I don't know. Well, it's.
It's under, I think, under, Ben bylaws, $500 is the maximum.
This isn't a Ben bylaw, this, that's the summary conviction, the summary conviction section.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not entirely sure of that. There is a provision for, I think, potentially for $1,000, but I, I don't have the answer to that with me.
Because I have another question. I look at the, the litter and, the littering fine can be discounted to 100, and I'm just wondering if that's typical? Because litter costs us so much money, costs taxpayers so much money, and I'm just wondering why it's so low.
We, we tried to build some discretion into our ticketing, as, as we do with, you know, setting out the carts on, on garbage day, to provide some flexibility for the different circumstances that we may encounter with, with littering. So, depending on the nature of the offense, one of the things that we, we wanted to do was for illegal dumping, for example, to be able to have a larger fine, and that was one of the things that, that we addressed in the new bylaw. So, but we like to leave some flexibility to the bylaw enforcement officers as well.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Counselor O'Neill.
Thank you very much. Yeah, maybe this is something that the deputy senior manager can't address, but interpretation and the definitions, a public place includes street, boulevard, sidewalk, square, lane, bridge, highway, or other place to which the public has access by right or by invitation. And I would say that, you know, a public washroom on the main floor of, of the City Hall is a public place to which the public has access, yet we are saying that you are not allowed to urinate or defecate in a public place. Do we need to be more specific here to say it has to be outdoors and not, and, and not a, because, I don't know, the common understanding that people would have would be that that's a public place there, that you get to do your business there without being fined, I hope.
I would think within the confines of the washroom, it's considered a private place, though, and within, within a public building.
Okay. So, and, and the other thing I would like to, I think Counselor Zerillo was on the track to get to this one, but can we expect to see expectoration enforcement or expectoration Actually, have we ever given out a, a fine for spitting in public?
I, I'm not aware of us giving out a, a fine for spitting in public.
Actually, sometimes when I'm walking in a park and the urge hits me, I do clear my throat and my nose, and I guess that's illegal, I didn't know that. So, I have to take Kleenex with me all the time, do I?
I'm sorry, I'm disgusted.
For me?
Okay.
Well, I don't know, this is something, you know, like, we've got a law that says that you can't expectorate in a public place. So, in the woods, Monday Park, can't clear my throat?
I, I think that may not attract any objections when you're in the woods, but it, it might when you're in a public place such as, such as our City Hall, for example. So, I think there, we need to be some discretion implied, but I don't, I don't honestly think we issue tickets typically for that offense.
So, there'll be expectoration exceptions then? Good, okay.
Yes.
Well, thank you for spitting that out.
It wasn't true.
But it's interesting that you'd raise that, because in the, in the same line of the same bylaw, in the same line of the same bylaw, the fine for expectrating is the same as the fine for defecating in public. It's discountable down to 100 bucks for defecating, and yet, if you deposit paper after defecating, it's a different fine of $250. Yeah, it's more money for the paper than it is for the, you see how far off track this conversation went? It is very interesting. Yeah, exactly.
I would say staff have no doubt.
Well, actually, and, and I would concur, that I, I think the littering is one of those things that we're, and I want to apologize publicly to the young man who was in front of me. I was riding my bike across the crosswalk at Barnett Highway toward the bus loop, and the fellow right in front of me threw his cigarette package on the ground, and I may have yelled at him more loudly. It was, it was nighttime, and it was dark, and, and perhaps the yelling startled him, and he dropped his, his books on the ground. And I felt bad, but he had thrown his garbage on the ground first, so he picked both of them up, and I assumed threw the garbage down again shortly. But it's one of those realities that we all face, we see people doing this stuff, we do, we see the results of it more likely. Saw it this morning, again on my way in, just the mess that people leave behind, and the vast majority of us are offended by it. And we really should be letting those people who leave the mess, including cigarette butts, but, you know, coffee cups and everything else. I would love to see a fine, if you're deliberately littering, a fine that's much higher than $100, that I'd like to see us really make the, make the case that this is unsocial behavior, and it costs taxpayers an awful lot, just like illegal dumping is like theft from the taxpayers of the community.
from the taxpayers of the community, so is any deposits that you might leave behind in, in public places other than washrooms. The question is, fourth and final reading. Oh, stop, we were flush with time. Fourth and final reading, all in favor, opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Those are going to be tough minutes to write.
Discussion ensued.
Item seven pertains to proposed Austin Heights neighborhood plan, OCP amendment, bylaw number 4776, and zoning amendment, bylaw number 4777. Staff recommendations that council give first reading to see if Coquitlam citywide official community plan amendment, bylaw number 4776, to amend the Austin Heights neighborhood plan and make related amendments to the development permit area guidelines. Two, in accordance with the Local Government Act, consider bylaw number 4776 in conjunction with both the City of Coquitlam 2017 five-year financial plan bylaw, which is 4706, and the Regional Solid Waste Management Plan. Council's being asked to give first reading, save Coquitlam zoning amendment, bylaw number 4777, and that bylaws numbers 4776 and bylaw number 4777 be referred to public hearing.
Moved by councillor Asmussen, second by councillor Marsden. And councillor O'Neill. Councillor O'Neill.
Yes, on page two of the report, public consultation, the second last paragraph, I want clarification on this. To date, one letter has been received from TransLink. Is that the only letter we've received from anybody? Or it's just, you're pointing out that TransLink has sent only one letter, and of the many letters we've received, one has been sent from TransLink? Curious about this.
Through the, through the mayor to councillor O'Neill. Initially, when we brought the report forward, we had only received one letter from TransLink. Since then, Metro Vancouver has also submitted a letter as well.
Okay, so the only letter that we've received, period, was from TransLink, and now we've received a letter from Metro Vancouver, okay. And on the point of receiving the letter from TransLink, to me, this was exciting and new information. TransLink, TransLink does not anticipate any impacts to the goods and people moving capacity of Austin Avenue, which is designated as part of the major road network, and future bus improvements will provide the Austin Heights Neighborhood Centre with a frequent transit network level of service every 15 minutes or better. Is that the first time we've heard this, or has that been a long-range plan? Because it hadn't really sunk into me before, but it's really good to hear this.
Through the mayor to councillor O'Neill. That, that has been part of some recent planning with TransLink and the tri-cities municipalities. It's identified in the northeast area transit plan.
Okay, good. And now it's cemented in my mind. Thank you very much.
There you go. Yeah, I made note of that a couple of days ago. It surprised me at the time that it is now, it's now written in, not stone, but as close to stone as TransLink ever writes anything. Councillor Reed.
Thank you. Two things for public hearing. So, the first one is, we had been discussing, when we got into developing this plan for the Austin Heights, about how we were going to place the buildings on the various lots in order to mitigate any shadowing problems and to make the best juice of the property we have. So, would you make sure that that is, can be demonstrated on screen at the public hearing? Because I think that's going to be very important. The other thing, I don't know quite what you're going to do about, but we talk about affordable housing and special needs housing. And we talk about how we will do a maximum allowable of one FAR, which is fine, up to, up to five, so I get that last one FAR for rental housing. But that doesn't mean just because it's rental is that it's affordable. So I'm wondering if we can wrap our heads around some way that we can assure that we have rental housing, and perhaps some way that we can have affordable rental housing. And by affordable, perhaps buying down through our housing affordability study, or whatever else, or perhaps having a partner come in and take a certain number of suites in the buildings, and use those for affordable housing at perhaps 20, 25% below market rate, and for an established number of years, five, 10, 20, whatever works out. And I think we need to put that option in, in that area. And I think it would be a great area to have it in, because transit's there, everything's walkability, and I think we can get ourselves some really nice, new, affordable homes by working with partners, or by putting some kind of a housing agreement in with the developers. And I would like to be able to bring something along that line to the public hearing. Thank you.
Councillor Towner.
Thank you. On page two, it mentions, the report mentions public consultation, some letters were mailed out. Can you tell me how many letters were mailed out?
Through the chair, there were approximately 700 letters sent out to property owners, business owners, and tenants within the neighborhood center.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. There are still some, and I hate, I'm going to bring it up. The borders of this don't encompass a couple of properties that are natural for a reconsideration, and I don't know what the process is, in particular for the, the lands to the west, and to west of Blue Mountain, south of Austin, currently a church parking lot, but has been discussed in the context of, of development, both redevelopment of the church itself and getting a new sanctuary, but also residential redevelopment. I don't know what, you know, it's, I don't want to complicate the process related to the yellow, the yellow boundary, but I also want to know, I want the public to understand that there's other discussions that have to take place as well. Mr McIntyre isn't smiling. Oh, he is now, okay.
Yes, thanks, Riship. Now, we've, we've been aware of that for a while, in fact, in discussions around that. I guess there's a couple of different ways to tackle that. Obviously, traction from council would be the clearest. And that wouldn't, you know, entail amending a bylaw now and then bring that forward. We could, if the request is for some analysis or discussion of that in the public hearing brief, we can do that also. If it's something for future reference, and we can have that discussion at the public hearing, and see if there's like-minded views, and then it could be a, a future work item, that would be a third option, I would identify.
Certainly, option one wasn't in my consideration, only making sure that people understand that outside of this process, we're going to dialogue on this one here, there's possibly going to be discussion about one additional person. Miss councillor O'Neill.
Wouldn't, now, coming out of the Coquitlam low heat neighborhood plan, wasn't it announced that we are looking, there's a possible process to look at arterials as well, that we announced?
The frequent transit development.
And this is on, and this is on an arterial, so wouldn't it be covered by that? Why not?
Yeah. Andrew.
Through the chair to councillor O'Neill. Yeah, there's an implementation action identified in the Coquitlam low heat neighborhood plan for staff to explore undertaking a corridor development strategy to look at some of the arterials in southwest Coquitlam. Although the focus of that strategy would be to look at arterials that are outside of neighborhood centers. So this is an identified neighborhood center that has a higher and better use already identified, and it would be the border areas to connect the various neighborhood centers that would be the focus of that strategy.
So I thought the mayor's point was that this isn't in the neighborhood center, it's just to the west, therefore, it would be part of.
Yes, my, my apologies, sorry, you are correct.
Okay, so, so it is, it is covered by the arterial review, then, where we're looking at? Could be.
Yes, theoretically, it actually is, yes.
Okay, there we go.
There you go.
Solution.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Thanks. I want to support what councillor Reed was requesting for the public hearing in terms of some kind of opportunity to explore some non-market housing in the area. I think it's, even though it is a neighborhood center, it's, it's not on a Skytrain line, and if we're ever going to get non-market housing on a good transit corridor, this is a good spot for it. And so, just want to make sure that that gets captured, and just curious, what, you know, what, would you have something in mind in terms of trying to capture what councillor Reed had suggested? Sorry, putting you on the spot there.
Through the chair to councillor Wilson, there are a couple of different policy approaches that we could apply. Some of that had been anticipated in the housing affordability strategy adopted by council a little over a year ago. We've got a number of things in the mix right now. There's one coming forward, I think you'll see very, very soon, a report about that, accessing the reserve fund to drive at that below-market rental rates. This material we're also putting together, this comes out of the HAS Short-Term Two-Year Ten-Point Action Plan, and we've got some work on that, we're coming forward to council here very shortly. Again, we're trying to drill into how you can get the rental rates lower. We seem to have met a fair bit of success in getting rental units proposed and underway. Now it's looking at that rent level, and we've got some, some different approaches there possible, so, yeah, it'd be looking at that, and we can write that up in the public hearing brief.
Fantastic, thank you.
It's on the floor. All in favor, opposed, carried unanimously, going to public hearing.
Item eight is a proposed official community plan amendment bylaw, it's bylaw number 4665, and zoning amendment bylaw number 4666. This is to re-designate and re-zone 1412 to 1414 Pipeline Road to facilitate a townhouse development. Staff recommendations that council give first reading, save Coquitlam official community plan amendment bylaw number 4665. First reading, save Coquitlam zoning amendment bylaw number 4666. In accordance with the Local Government Act, consider bylaw number 4665 in conjunction with the Save Coquitlam 2017 Five-Year Financial Plan bylaw, which is bylaw number 4706, and the Regional Solid Waste Management Plan. The bylaw number 4665 and bylaw number 4666 be referred to public hearing. And the council instructs staff to complete the following items prior to council's consideration of fourth reading, should council grant second and third readings to these bylaws. And these items are: A, submission of a subdivision plan to the satisfaction of the approving officer; B, registration of an access easement agreement to permit driveway access to the neighboring property to the north at 1420 Pipeline, should this property redevelop in the future; C, registration of a Section 219 restrictive covenant to ensure compliance with the approved acoustical study; and D, complete any outstanding geotechnical requirements to the satisfaction of the general manager of engineering and public works.
Moved by councillor Towner, second by councillor Asmussen, councillor, councillor O'Neill.
Thank you. I just have a question about the present OCP designation, suburban residential. I couldn't find in any of the sheets that the city staff has presented me over the years, a definition for what is the, the present OCP designation, suburban residential. Is that de facto, single-family homes? Look, it sounded like a very broad designation, and I wondered why townhomes couldn't have fit into that. Just, can anybody tell me what suburban residential means and includes?
Through the chair, yeah, the, that OCP designation is, it's truly suburban, or, well, early-day suburban, I guess you'd call it. The RS2, it was a companion zoning that goes with that, and there were areas in Coquitlam that were outside of planned neighborhoods, like the Westwood Plateau, there had been some residual lands along the Pipeline Road corridor, up in the northeast, before the neighborhood plans were done, there was a lot of the RS2 zoning up there, and, and that was the OCP designation. I think it's a half-acre lot size and one-acre lot size, depending on the servicing availability, so it was a little bit of a, you know, a zone that would allow for single-family development at the time, on little larger lots than what you'd normally see in a, in a planned neighborhood.
A little bit of a designation, not a zone.
Yeah, sort of an in-between, single-family land use designation zoning.
Okay. We don't use this anymore? Is that right?
It's, it's, I would characterize it as a bit of a residual, single-family zoning and land use designation that will be gradually replaced over time, like, for example, Northwest Burke Vision area, I think a lot of the Hazel Coy stuff up there is probably RS2, and that will in time be replaced through neighborhood plans and the zonings that go with that. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Wilson.
Thanks. I really like this proposal. How will we prevent suites from basements? On some of them, it's, definitely would be difficult to put a suite in, but on some, it looks like it'd be pretty easy to put a suite in.
Through the chair to councillor Wilson, I guess the standard initial response would be the proposed RT townhouse residential zone doesn't permit secondary suites as a, as a permitted use. We can then, once we get more detailed floor plans, be quite vigilant and to ensure that, or try to mitigate the possibility of that happening in the future. And I guess, again, if we want to take the belt and suspenders approach, and I, I said, I'm sure that the applicant would be amenable to, to register a Section 219 restrictive covenant, those, I guess, would be sort of the tools that we would have, have at hand to try to address that issue.
And this would be a strata as well, correct?
That's correct, councillor Wilson.
That would help, okay. Thank you.
Okay. A member of council has asked about the proximity of this to another undeveloped piece of land that comes before council regularly, and it's about a half kilometer down the road. Much, much steeper than this one. This one actually is a, I perceive it to be a, quite an interesting way to carve into the mountain, and using the back wall of the basement as the, as the grade change to allow you enough flat room to build a unit on both sides of a, of a flat street, and then another retaining wall. I think it works well, and I think we should be trying to encourage some of the folks that develop up on the mountain, across on the other side of Coquitlam River, to contemplate whether or not they can encompass some of the slopes of their parcels with retaining walls inside buildings rather than massive retaining walls outside. Question is first reading, and a bunch of others. All in favor, opposed, carried unanimously.
Item nine is the development permit authorization for a proposed 27-unit townhouse development at 3535 Princeton Avenue. Staff recommendations that council approve the signing and sealing of this DP for 3535 Princeton Avenue, and that its mayor and senior clerk be authorized to execute it.
Moved by councillor Reed, second by councillor Zerillo. 353, oh, councillor Wilson.
I also really like this one. Sorry, but I just, and I know it may not have been possible in this particular case. When I look at the overall plan, and the kids' play area is to the far eastern end, and I can totally understand, you know, to have it up against the green belt, but I just, I just wish that we could try, in our townhouse developments, to have the play area in the middle, and make it more of a community area, rather than always having them pushed out to the far ends of the developments. I realize, you know, the property narrows around there, and maybe that's why they couldn't put the units at the far eastern end in that middle part, but I just think if you could have that play area in the middle, that would be, would develop a real sense of community, it would be safer for the kids. You know, people would really, I think, congregate there, and... be safer for the kids. You know, people would really, I think, congregate there, and, so, again, I know it may not have worked in this particular case. If it can work, great, but it, but in the future, if we could really try our best to try to have those play areas more in the middle. Lots of people have townhouses in Coquitlam that are 20, 30 years old, and they're very, very popular because there's a little community area right in the, the middle. People, you know, the eyes are on that, that center area. Kids are being watched, and families get to know each other. So, really like the look of it and all that, but in the future, I really hope that we can push for that a bit more.
Yep, I had kind of the opposite comment, because I think that there, putting it in the middle might actually limit the market to those families that, that haven't passed that stage, because the playground is also a, an area that isn't, that conducive to shift workers and such. And so, there's other realities associated with it. I think some families may choose the other end of the development on purpose, but I did want to, my comment was actually on Appendix 11, and 12, for that matter, both of which are sections through the hill, and you'll see once again, the reality of a, a foundation wall being the, is where the grade gets taken up. It's a two-story on one side and three-story on the other. All, and I looked in the audience with that very question in mind, councillor Asmussen. But where you can have a two-story on one side and three-story on the other, where you can have the driveways go straight into a subfloor basement, that absolutely, I think it works a whole lot better than some of the other realities. And this is a sloped site, a significantly challenged site, that I think they've solved a whole lot of it with, with those, those features. So, very happy with it. And the question is, first reading, oh, sorry, development permit. All in favor, opposed, carried unanimously.
Item 10 is a development permit authorization for a proposed five-unit townhouse building at 491 Laurentian Crescent.
Didn't take long.
Staff recommendations that council approve signing and sealing of the DP for 491 Laurentian Crescent, and that the mayor and senior clerk be authorized to execute it.
Moved by councillor Marsden, second by councillor Towner. This is something that's been around for a while. I'm so pleased to see it come forward. Townhouses are desperately needed, so if they, they held on, on by design, it was well-designed. All in favor, opposed, carried unanimously.
Item 11 is a development permit authorization for three proposed new buildings at 1301 Lowy Highway. Staff recommendations that council approve the signing and sealing of this DP for 1301 Lowy Highway, and that the mayor and senior clerk be authorized to execute it.
Moved by councillor Asmussen, second by councillor Towner. Well, it was moved by three people simultaneously. No discussion? All in favor, opposed, carried unanimously.
Item 12 is consideration of a housing agreement bylaw number 4724. This is for a 67-unit seniors rental building, and a request to access the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund to support 14 below-market rental units at 1226 Johnson Street. Staff recommendations that council support in principle, a maximum capital contribution of $177,545 from the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund to cover a portion of the city's development cost charges and building permit fees for 14 below-market rental units at 1226 Johnson Street. To be owned and operated by the Finnish Canadian Rest Home Association and secured through housing agreement bylaw number 4724. Also requesting that council give first, second, and third readings to Save Coquitlam Housing Agreement bylaw number 4724.
It was already moved by councillor Reed, second by councillor Asmussen. My hesitation here is I don't like the idea of tying the DCCs and the building permit fees. I, we don't get to waive those, so I think if we're going to make a contribution, it could be coincidence that it's the same amount as, but I just don't like the idea of attaching those. And if, and if any council members want to concur, I, just for future direction, but I, I don't get to decide those matters, but I, I, I think it's an important principle that we don't waive DCCs because otherwise we're going to have to. So, that's my hesitation. On that one, councillor O'Neill.
Thanks, and I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that this is the second council meeting in recent weeks where we've taken some action on affordable housing. The previous action came like at 1:00 in the morning, and it was actually quite significant, and nobody spoke to it at the time. And that was the, going forward with the relationship with Habitat for Humanity to build some affordable housing on Coast Marine, just above David on the west side of Coast Marine, which is a significant achievement for the, for council and the city. And like I said, it was 1:00 in the morning, and we passed it unanimously. But we really should have said more about it. It was, it was really something. And so, here's another thing. So, when people ask us what we're doing on affordable housing, this is the sort of thing we're doing. And it's not just one thing, it's a whole range of things. And the affordable housing strategy that we passed, what, last year, had so many different options for us to support and to help respond. And I'm glad that it's in place and doing its work. And I'm going to support this. And I understand what the mayor says, yeah, so the coincidence probably would be better. Yeah.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, I also agree with what the mayor said, for once.
Just kidding, councillor Marsden.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the, the relationship between the, the subsidy that we're giving and the SAFER grant, because it seems to me, can't remember where I read it, but the, the people in the 14 below-market units have to also be able to qualify for a SAFER grant. And so, I was trying to figure out, are we subsidizing BC housing here, making it easier for, because I'm assuming that, okay, there'll be 80% of the market rent, but then they'll also be applying for SAFER grants at the same time, or SAFER subsidy? No?
Your worship, let me try to respond on that. No, my understanding is that through providing the, basically the credit from the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund to write down some costs in the project, it gets it down to that 80% of the median household income. So, it, it's setting rent levels at, at that, and that's the commitment the proponent's entering into with the city. I think what it also means is that those tenants, they may also have that ability, depending on their personal situation, age, household size, income levels, and that, that they could then tap into various senior government funding assistance, and then help them in meeting that 80% rent, rent level.
Or the 30% of their income for rent?
Yeah, it, it, we're setting, and through this agreement, we're trying to target a rent level that's below-market. Those programs would assist them in actually meeting that below-market rental rate.
No, I think it's awesome. I'm, I'm so, I've loved this project from the day we first saw it, and, yeah, I think it's great, very happy to support it.
Thank you, councillor Marsden.
Thank you. I'll start by echoing a couple of comments that councillor O'Neill made with regards to the utilization of the Affordable Housing Affordability Fund or Affordable Housing Fund. This is, I think, the third different methodology that's been used that we're in the, the 10 action items, so I think that's, that's good to see. I want to commend staff for working on that. I agree with the mayor, when I was reading through this and I was seeing the, the correlation to DCCs and, and the amount, I, I struggled with that, because I really don't want to see that, that there. Because I looked at it and said, $177,000 to get 14 units down to that 80% plateau for 30% of their income. To me, that didn't look like a, a big check to write. And so, perhaps it's because, again, it's a not-for-profit running it, so they're not as, as concerned with the cap rates on it, but I thought this was, this was a very easy yes. I, I want to thank staff for working on it, and for bringing it forward, and let's get some shovels in the ground and find some more opportunities like this going forward. I mean, it worked out to $12,700 per unit, so not a, not a great deal. When we talk about subsidies to help with the affordability, this is one of the lower ones I've seen. So, I, I think, you know, we've got some room there. Let's not be tie our hands with that DCC component. Okay? Thanks a lot.
Thank you, councillor Asmussen.
I'm supportive of this housing agreement. I, I want to thank the Finnish Canadian Housing Society for their work in front of gaining this land and a deal together to utilize this and get the town housing and the agreement you have to provide the seniors' housing that's here and the below-market seniors' housing that's in there. So, it's a benefit to all groups within this area, and providing some, some good use for that land that's been sitting there and you're waiting to develop for many, many years. So, I'm glad to see us finally here, and you can get going on your project. So, I'll be fully supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank the nice folks from the Finnish Canadian Rest Home Association. This is a not-for-profit that does good work. Okay, question is before us. All in favor, opposed, carried unanimously. Yes, yes. We finished it.
Item 13 is proposed community amenity contribution collection policy and procedure. Staff recommendations that council adopt the proposed community amenity charge collection policy and procedure attached to the report that's before you, setting out the process for determining and receiving financial contributions under the city's CAC program.
Moved by councillor Reed, second by councillor Marsden. Councillor O'Neill.
And thank you very much. I just want to thank staff for including the important bullet point. If an applicant chooses not to contribute CACs, the application will be advanced for council's consideration, advising of the response. I think that's absolutely the responsible thing to do. As you know, I've spoken against this program several times, I don't need to do it again, and I'm glad to see this formal document here, because it was, I was asking most of the questions about how this would implement and collected, because there was some gaps in, in this. And it's not surprising, since it's kind of a paralegal kind of thing to do, and it was a bit of a fly-by-night thing. Oh, no, that's not, that's too hard of a word, I'm sorry. But it was slapdash, I guess. And this is putting, taking some of the slash, slap out of it and putting a little more dash and verve into it, which will probably serve the city very well, but it doesn't serve my point of view very well, except for the inclusion of this very important consideration, that it does come to council with, with without payment of CACs. Thank you.
Councillor Marsden.
Well, thank you for, for bringing this forward. It makes some good sense. I've got a couple of comments about it. I mean, I do support the community many charges. The people we've talked to like the process that we've come up with, the staff have worked with. The development community understands it. It's, it's very clear. I welcome the new government to, to provide the legislation that doesn't cause us to make this voluntary, that they actually give us that authority, where we look and say, here you go, this is a mandatory contribution, because I, I know certainly in our case, we're, we're finding good purpose for the money, and it truly is going to community amenities. So, I would welcome that change to provincial legislation. The one question I have is on page two, where the rezoning application has multiple phases. The CACs for the entire project are payable at the outset. In, in a large project that has, you know, four or five phases, that could be a very significant sum of money that's being asked to put up front, that, let's be clear, their banker is not going to give them that money at the outset. So, they're trying to find ways to, to services and cash flow. So, I, I struggle with, well, bankers can be cheap. We prefer to think of it as frugal and cautious, but cheap also works.
They apparently have good hearing.
Exactly. So, I'm wondering on, on that one, if there might be some look on that. I mean, if it's, if it's two phases, I get it. When we start to deal in three and four and five phases, so perhaps staff have a comment?
Volunteer. Mr. Fuji.
Through the Chair, through the Chair to councillor Marsden. I guess one of the principles when we were trying to develop the, the heart of policy was the, in terms of, it is at the rezoning stage where typically the, there is the lift in the land value to the developer, property owner stemming from the rezoning piece. So, the initial principle was, you know, ask for the contribution as a condition of rezoning application. We did, we did, I guess, struggle a bit about if there's a, like a, a multiple-phase development with, you know, four or five type of phases. I can see, you know, two, three, yeah, you know, the payout front is probably the way to go. But there are, you know, if we do see one with, you know, multiple phases, perhaps there is a, a number that's five or whatever, whatever it might be, that, you know, we, we can, and subject to council's agreement, perhaps look at a letter of credit or some other security if there, if there are multiple phases of a, of a development. So, that, that option there exists.
Okay, I appreciate it. I'd just like to see that there is that flexibility, again, just, just in looking to move this forward. So, again, thanks for your work on it. I certainly will support this moving forward. Thanks.
Further to what councillor Marsden said, I, I agree, that could be a real holdback, so I think it's fair that they could pay it. But I think what got us into thinking about this in the first place was that the fee wasn't established, and we need to establish a fee. And even though the phases may be five years apart, the fee that's established at the time that you do it, in the beginning, if you say it's going to be at building stage, that's the fee that it ends up being, not based on the current market value three or four years down the line. So, I think, is that not one of the reasons that we went into this, is because we had some developer have a fee established, and then when he went to the next phase, we wanted more money because of the difference in value?
Through the Chair, through the Chair to councillor Reed, that discussion, if you recall, was associated with, with the density bonusing piece, where the, the density bonus is calculated as, is sort of a, it's related to the, the actual land value at the time.
Yeah.
And because land has escalated so much in the last few years, there were some issues in that case, but the, yeah.
We also talked about the CACs at the same time, and how we regulate those.
Through the Chair to councillor, councillor Reed, and the, and the, and the policy as proposed this evening will provide sort of more certainty for folks that it is at the, at the rezoning stage. There may be, you know, over the course of time, some sort of indexing for inflation, but that sort of thing. But other than that, yeah, it's, it's, it's not really, it's not linked back to land value. It just, it's a, it's a straight, a square foot or, or per lot fee.
Yeah, I don't think we should be indexing for inflation. It's a gift, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Asmussen.
Well, I, I don't, I think the point is, I think it's a voluntary contribution. It's supposed to be a voluntary contribution. And I think paying enough funds is no different than what we do with some of our development permits right now in Hyzer. You pay up all your fees upfront to make sure that you're going to continue. If you get to rezoning and you delay the building, we've always talked about buildings not being built on time. But in principle, I didn't support CACs. I'm not going to support the cleaning of this amendment, because I don't support it, because there is no legislation authorizing it, because it is a voluntary fee. That doesn't have any legislation supporting it. If it did, as councillor Marsden said, that the government put legislation in, I would support it. But until that point in time, we have no authority to collect it. Thank you.
We have no authority to collect it, other than the fact that the province publishes a best practices guide on how to collect these. There's no legislation involved in parking meters either. But anyway, I, I, I support the concept, because this is a way in which we can make sure that the amenities we need to support development get funded by development, rather than by the existing taxpayers, and I will continue to support that, even though I spent 20 years of my earlier life arguing against it. All in favor. All in favor, opposed. Councillor O'Neill is opposed, as is councillor Zerillo, and councillor Asmussen. Counselor O'Neill is opposed, as is Counselor Zerillo and Counselor Asmussen. Motion carries.
Item 14 pertains to Panorama Spray Park Enhancement Project. Staff recommendations that council endorse the proposed design and budget of $360,000 to complete the enhancements to the spray park as per the report before you, utilizing $275,000 in existing funding allocated from the facility's upgrade problem, program. And two, the council authorized $85,000 in supplementary funding from the infrastructure reserve to complete this project.
Move by Counselor Marsden, seconded by Counselor Zerillo. Counselor Reed.
This is a joint school park site. Who does the maintenance on this?
Mr. Alloever.
Through the chair, the maintenance, all the work around the spray pad is the city.
So they're not responsible?
Not at all.
Counselor Wilson.
I really like it when we put a placeholder amount in, that we have a fairly good idea of what something's going to cost. So I remember when we put this $150,000 in, and I've only been on council for three and a half years, so it's not that old. So how did we get so wrong? Because, because if we're going to keep putting placeholders in and the actual amounts are almost doubled, then, then I don't want to do placeholders anymore. I want, you know, a more detailed analysis. Sorry.
Yes, through the chair, this was one of the early estimates in the aquatic infrastructure study. If you recall, that, I think we highlighted it in one of those lists. That was about, that was probably about three years ago, maybe, maybe two years ago, two and a half years ago. At the time, I think the thinking, we, you know, I, I remember it was very high-level thinking. It was not intended to facilitate necessarily a, a funding envelope. It was literally to support a balloon, a kind of number on what, what could be the very long-term kind of asset mix and value and, and costs of the infrastructure program for aquatics. That when we did a little bit more specific analysis later on, we did have subsequent allocation from the building replacement. If you remember, we did, we tried to replace like-for-like. And so we did up that allocation, but we didn't have a chance to update it back into the aquatic infrastructure. So really, it is the 275 that we, that was more the, the detailed allocation. And we, we can do a replacement for that amount.
I totally understand we can do a replacement for that amount, but I guess, subconsciously, I was thinking we were going to do a replacement for 150,000. And that, again, might have been my, my misinterpretation. But I think if we're going to do placeholder amounts, I think we've just got to clarify that this isn't necessarily a budget amount. That's all, maybe. My other question is, we, we have a great drawing of what the $360,000 park would look like. The $275,000 park would be basically a carbon copy of what's there now, slight improvements, but I, we didn't get a diagram or anything of, of what the 275,000 would be. So I have nothing really to compare it to, other than if it's going to be exactly the way it is right now.
No, it's not going to be exactly what it is right now. It, it essentially would be a, a lower, a slightly lower version of what you see here under the, I think we call it the, the river concept. It, it just, it's very similar, but it would have slightly lower number of, of features. There'd be less benches. I think we've highlighted the benches. I think there's two or three benches that are eliminated. There's a few, less number of spray features and elements. So it's really just a scaled-down version.
Okay, maybe, sorry, maybe I missed that then. I apologize. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Zerillo.
My questions were just about the puddles. I just wanted to understand if they're only open during the summer months, the same as the spray park, or if all the time this stream bed will have eddies and a puddle with eddies. I just want to understand what it will look like winter versus summer.
Through the chair, they, they would just be, the amenity would only be open during the, the times that the water park is open. So it would only be functional with, with the water itself. But the idea is that with the enhanced option, we're trying to create amenities that are more suitable for toddlers, so slower-running water, ability for younger toddlers to, you know, sit in the water and maneuver, play with water, and have some elements that are more sensory in terms of touch and sound as well.
But only during the summer will they be filled, filled in?
That's correct.
And do we have any concerns about wildlife and stuff? I'm sorry to ask this, but I, I'm visualizing little, yes, who knows what. But I'm visualizing little pools of water and...
It, it's, through the chair, it's going to be a constantly moving flow of water. There's health regulations to make sure that the water is safe for, for, you know, for humans to, to be interacting with the water.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marsden.
Looks good. My question came on pages two and three, where we talked about toddler zone, child zone, and youth zone. And we're dealing with a spray park. And so when I think toddler, okay, I get toddler, I get child, and I don't think youth and spray parks. And so when I, when I see what's there, that kind of fits the child component to me. So do we have some ideas of where the ages are here? Because youth, I'm thinking are, you know, early teens, you know, 13 to 18. And I don't see my 16-year-old daughter in a spray park. Can you shed some light on the terminology for me, please?
Through, through the chair, I think the idea is for basically 12 and under. And we're looking at, again, amenities for those sort of in the eight to 12 age group, where there is, again, some more interactive pieces where you can move, like silker guns-type amenities, where you can move and spray another child, that's sort of eight to 12-year-old. So there's a bit more interactive play between the, the two kids that's possible.
Okay. Well, then I, I appreciate that. And that makes sense, 12 and under. I would suggest, then, that we take a look at the terminology we're using throughout the parks and recas we're doing this, because, you know, we're going to see, say, a skate park, and that's going to be for youth. And you've just told me that's eight to 12 according to this definition. I don't think the skate park's for eight to 12. It's probably eight to 18, or eight to 25. So just, just from a consistency perspective of, of the work coming out of your department, I think you've done some great stuff here. This looks like it's going to be good, and I think it's going to be well-received and well-utilized. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Counselor O'Neill.
A couple of quick questions about the two options here, the lower-cost one and the enhanced. Trying to understand how, when, top of page two, and I guess it's said elsewhere as well as in the comments that we heard tonight, the, how you renew the existing spray park on a like-for-like basis, and you include new features at the same time. How is it like-for-like and new features? So you replaced, the only way I could figure that out is that it's everything is, everything is there that was, used to be there, and there's new features on top of that as well? Isn't that enhanced?
Through the chair, the reason why we were stating it like this is, I think in the past, there was some, a little bit of confusion when we talked about like-for-like, particularly when it came to playgrounds. And people seemed to think that it was kind of, you know, same kind of feature. You know, there's an old spray head on there. We're going to put a new spray head, but it could be an enhanced spray head that's, you know, a new model that does a lot more today than it did yesterday. So that's, that's what we're talking about. It, it's trying to replace kind of a like-for-like in terms of total number of pieces, perhaps a couple more if we can fit it in. But those pieces are actually enhanced service because they will do a much more than what the existing piece did today, even though it's a single-piece replacement for another piece.
When I'm replacing my 26-inch big tube TV with a 65-inch iDef, that's a like-for-like replacement? Because it's just a, it's still a TV that I'm replacing, but it's just a better quality TV?
Again.
And it costs more?
It, well, that's somewhat of an exaggeration, if I can, but...
No, not from Counselor O'Neill.
Just trying to make a point.
The idea, like I said in the past, it was, we, we heard confusion in the public around replacement of components in playgrounds, and the thinking that, hey, when we replace a playground, it's like-for-like. But in fact, it's an enhancement to the existing playground because it's all new. And the features today, even though they're similar, are going to provide a better value.
Thank you very much. I think I understand your thinking now. On the, the enhanced river concept, I remember the last time, well, one of the last times, a year or two ago, when we talked about the enhanced Koma Lake Park, that had a direct impact, using that enhanced money on other park projects that were needed, and those projects had to be delayed by a year. I see in the financial implications here that this, the extra $85,000 would come from the infrastructure reserve. Will that in turn curtail the redevelopment, the renewal of, of any other park that's on the waiting list?
I would say in this case, it would be a different situation. Back then, we, we were limited to, we had a number of projects on the go, and there was a number of, of questions around our capacity at that time to, to, to find funding. We are currently building our 2018 business plan and our project plan. And in that plan, we're, we're not assuming that this will be an additional funding source. If, if it was, I would probably hold off. In other words, if council were to not give us the 85,000 for this, we would not be proceeding with any kind of an, an allocation of funding from our budget or from a size building replacement budget. We'd simply build the 275 regular spray, spray park. So in, in, in some ways, your comments are, are, are similar. If we were not to receive the funding, we would have to go back to an option. And I think that was the case with Koma Lake as well. We had an existing option. I think council felt it was important to augment it, and we were trying to find funding at that time. But there were about three other park priority projects that were on the go, being reprioritized also. So I think we had a little bit more challenges in terms of funding those mid-year.
So everything else on your plan is going to proceed apace, even if you get this $85,000 extra? Some other neighborhoods?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, then it's fine. Good.
Absolutely.
Thank you. This is a recirc, isn't it? This is a recirculating? I couldn't find anywhere in the report.
It's a flow-through system.
Oh, okay. And do we use any of the gray water? Or just...
Most of our, our spray racks are not historically built.
No, I know. I just, so do we use the gray water for irrigation or anything like that? No.
I don't believe so.
Okay. My, my, my question is about parking. If we put this nice facility up there, and it was brought up earlier about, you know, when we, when we do these nice things, where do people park? The adjacent parking lot, I think, actually enters through parkland, but the barrier that the school board puts up there, I think, is on parkland, but I'm not certain. Is there any way to get that reconciled eventually? And I know that, I can't go there, but I know that there's been longstanding parking challenges at Panorama, and I, I think that adding an, an amazing new amenity that's likely to attract 100 people at a time during the summer, hot summer months, we're, we're going to have trouble with parking. So I just don't know where we're going to go there.
Thank you, Your Worship. There's, it is an issue. We are, we have been working with the school district, and it has come up as part of our joint use agreement, our master joint use agreement discussion. There's, there's a handful of sites which we've worked hard to try and resolve parking usage issues. This one is an interesting one because there, there is some, some confusion. And historically, there was some work done by the school district on, on the city property, as, as council is probably aware. There is an opportunity at the bottom part of this field to actually, or the bottom part of the site, to get some parking down there as well. We've been talking to the school district, as they do have some plans to try and do some work at that school. So we're hopeful that we can resolve that issue through that discussion.
Okay. I'm going to go back to the water. Can we cistern it? Can we, we're elevated enough that you would think we'd have a several dozen, a couple dozen feet of, of water pressure. Is there a possibility, or has that been contemplated, whether we could irrigate that field, for example?
I don't believe it's been contemplated, but we're, we're actually, I'm happy to go back and take a quick look and perhaps get some information back to council on, on whether that's possible. Sure, we could talk to our consultant about that possibility.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. The question is budget. All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously? There it is.
Item 15 pertains to backyard chickens and beekeeping. Staff recommendations that council maintains the current zoning bylaw restrictions on backyard chickens and beekeeping, which limits these activities to the A3 agricultural and RS2 residential zones.
Moved by Counselor O'Neill, seconded by Counselor Towner. As someone who got stung on the weekend six times by a wasp's nest, I, as someone who loves bees, this one's a bit of a conflict. Counselor Zerillo.
Well, thank you so much to staff for bringing this forward, because I get lots of people asking me about it. It's difficult because the bees and the chickens are both together in this one. But I am aware of a number of properties in Coquitlam that are raising bees, that are in residential zone. So my question is, how are we going to deal with it? Just have to be reported? Or, I mean, I think many of us were aware of at least one that's in a zone that it shouldn't be. So I have less, I have less concerns about bees than I do at chickens. And I'm just wondering, what do we do with the fact that the idea of keeping bees is growing and we, we know of places in Coquitlam where bee hives are happening in a residential zone?
Thank you. In the...
Ms. Warner.
Thank you. In the absence of the city having actual policy around beekeeping, we do rely on the zoning bylaw restrictions as laid out in the report. And when and if we become aware of APRs or bee hives that are being kept on residential properties outside of the allowable zoning, those situations are dealt with on a complaint basis, and enforcement actions are applied as applicable and when necessary. So the situation as described in the report that we had last year, where there was a beehive in, in a residential area that was accessed by bears, two bears, the city did deal with that through application of our, of our bylaw requirements. But we are not currently actively seeking out bee hives in the city.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm disappointed about the beehive piece, but I totally understand that at this point in time, we have to deal with the bears in the city. So I'm, I'm accepting the staff's point at this, this stage, but I sure would like to see it come back in once we get our bears under control. I'd like to have it reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you. There was, there's one property that some council members are aware of. It's not residential, but contains bee equipment. I haven't verified that they're hives, but it's the equipment behind a very secure chain-link sort of solution. Is that anything that we have considered as one of the mitigating realities associated with bees? Or counsel, actually, Counselor Reed's next, so I won't take her thunder. But there's some solutions that could be brought to bear to... No, actually, I didn't intend that one. Sorry. Sorry. That was good, though. I'm smarter than I thought. That could be brought up, in the average... I'll go over to you. Are those things that we have contemplated?
Your worship, I have to admit that typically engineers are no experts of the birds and the bees, but we have enough experience with the bears. So based on that, I think, to date, we haven't considered the Cajun similar solutions. I think it would open up a can of worms we may not want to. So at this point, I'd like to leave it at that.
Mr. Wilson.
Thanks. I, the similar sentiments as Councilor Zerillo, in terms of, you know, the more important issue is dealing with our current bear situation. And it just really drove me nuts when I was reading the report and thinking about it and reading some more about it, that, you know, because we're having so many problems with the bears, because people aren't being responsible, that, you know, we're not going to be able to do this. So if we do decide to not allow it, continue to not allow it, really would, and again, this is my own preference, but try to really communicate it in a way that makes people understand that the reason we can't do this is because we're not being responsible enough on the bear issue. I'd like a little bit of peer pressure, maybe, and, you know, some people, again, you know, the people who aren't being responsible now aren't going to all of a sudden become responsible. But I would like those who really would like to do this to know that it's because of that behavior that we can't do it. And I don't know how the rest of council feels, but that would be my preference. Thanks.
Councilor Reed.
This is your dumb question of the evening. We have some green roofs. IKEA at one time was going to be a green roof, and we have a few apartments around with green roofs. Do bees fly that high?
That depends how high the roof is. How long is a piece of string?
Keep it up. 25 stories or, so, I mean, I really don't know if they do fly that high, or buzz that high.
I don't believe they can fly.
Don't ask the engineer.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't know, and we don't know it in metric nor in imperial.
Now you know why girls don't date engineers. They know nothing about birds and bees. So we really don't know. I mean, I know it's probably a silly question, but, like, green roofs would be the perfect place to try and promote it. So I'll just leave it with you. Thank you. Are you looking it up? Say what? Oh, well, then, fine. They can be up on the green roofs. How high do bees fly?
Isn't Google wonderful? Councilor Asmussen.
Well, thank you. I'm going to support staff recommendation. I think this is a sensible way of moving forward with this item. Backyard chickens or the beekeeping, and, you know, we're, I agree with both being prohibited from residential areas. And with bees, you know, somebody could have their own thing caged in, but if an accident happens and a swarm of bees gets out, there are people that are very allergic or can die from bee sting stuff. So in a residential area, it's just not something that should be there. There's many other problems that can happen with people living in the neighborhood. Somebody got stuck in by six wasps today. Somebody else can die from those type of things. So we have to look at those other realities about it, too. There's other types of animals there that will try to get into these things. So I just don't think they are, well, a lot of people want to be more into doing their own thing. I just don't think it fits within the neighborhoods or the densifying of our neighborhoods that we're having throughout the city. So I think I'll support the report the way it is and moving forward. Thank you.
Yep. Keeping in mind, of course, that our parks and recreation programs are going out there trying to encourage bees into our neighborhoods. This actually, I produced this today because I got an email from someone in Victoria who said, well, we, Victoria approved chickens, backyard chickens, with no problems whatsoever. And so I wrote him back saying, well, this is the number of bear sightings that have been sighted in Victoria, and this is Coquitlam. Both of them the same timeframe since January, and both of them the same scale. So you can, you can see that we do have some realities in Coquitlam that are different from realities in some other communities that might have found that backyard chickens or backyard bees, beekeeping, are perfectly normal realities in their communities. In ours, we just have a, we have a different reality, so. But a green roof, there's no question, as long as the elevators are bear-proof? Yeah. There we go. You put it forward. So the question is, I'm actually going to separate them, if that's okay. The council maintains current zoning bylaw restriction on backyard chickens, which limits this activity to A3 agricultural, RS2 residential. This is chickens only. All in favor? Opposed? Chickens only? Restricting chickens? Okay? All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously? Same wording with beekeeping? So this is maintaining the restriction on beekeeping. All in favor? All opposed? Councilor Reed wants them on green roofs. I'd be fine with them on green roofs, but I won't be opposed to this. Councilor Reed, Councilor Reed is opposed. Motion carries. Oops.
Sorry.
Now, the question is only, do we maintain our current zoning bylaw restriction on beekeeping to A3 and RS2? Yes or no? And so the question is, do we maintain it? All in favor of maintaining it? All opposed? Councilor Reed would be fine with beekeeping. So Councilor Reed is opposed. The motion carries. Right?
I have no idea.
I'm about six feet separated it. Don't we get a chance then to speak about them individually?
Most, most people in their comments had individual comments for chickens or...
But it's...
And we could've.
Was it an amendment that you made, or did you do separation?
I did accept the...
Oh, if any member of council asks for things to be separated, we normally separate them as a matter of course, and I was the one that asked.
But it was all, it was all one recommendation?
Recommendation was chickens and bees be restricted. And I said, okay, chickens, yes or no? And bees, yes or no?
Sorry, I thought that was an amendment, and that we were going to be able to speak to it.
Oh, you're just separation of the two...
No, I understand, I understand. I mean, I agree with Councilor Reed, but I guess I would have lost anyways, so, okay.
Again, I can recall the vote on bees. You want to recall? All in favor of maintaining the restriction on bees? All opposed? Councilor Wilson and Reed are opposed. You keep talking, and you're getting us, you're getting us.
I don't...
That's...
Next.
Okay, next item.
Thank you. Next item is item 16, which is the Metro Vancouver Board in brief for its meeting of June 23rd. One of our Metro Vancouver board representatives is available to respond to questions, and that is Mayor Stewart. And the staff recommendations that council receive for information, the Metro Vancouver Board in brief.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Reed, second by Councilor Asmussen. Councilor O'Neill, did you have anything?
Yeah, thank you. Sitting on the performance and audit committee, we have financial issues come to our table four times a year. And I guess there's going to be a really big financial issue come to our table, given the very first item here, carbon price policy for Metro Vancouver. And then the first paragraph, the last sentence says, "This enables Metro Vancouver to consider climate change in every decision, select the greenest option available, and manage the future, and manage risk of future cost-related GHD emissions." So what this says, and maybe, I'm hopeful that Kelly Sonoski or Greg Valu, who wrote this synopsis, simplified it more than it actually was. But the way it reads right now is that, money be damned, cost be damned, budget be damned, we are going to be selecting the greenest option available in every decision that we make. Is that actually what transpired at the board?
Odd that you'd raise that, since I underscored it for you. No, we've never, ever decided that. Although there are some who, on the board, who perceive perhaps that that is an underlying pressure in the design of facilities, for example, where we do tend perhaps to end up with a more, much, much more expensive option than base. And I'm not sure base is always the best solution, the most cost-effective, but I would be one of those that would suggest that we need to balance economics, social, environmental, and the various realities associated with those.
That seems like an eminently reasonable position to take, Your Worship. Thank you. I'm glad you enunciated that position. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, and I had one in the middle of page three, is community land trusts for affordable housing. I can raise this one, because it's been raised publicly, and there's been some discussion about it, because there is a community land trust that is working right now with the owners at, the owners at Hoy Creek Co-op, the members of the co-op, trying to figure out how to make CMHC whole from their mortgage and potentially take over the parcel that is the Hoy Creek Co-op, with the intent that they could then renew the affordable housing component of it, using some mechanism, and we're not sure what yet, but it was the community land, the land trust is one that is owned now, or essentially a subsidiary of the Co-op Housing Federation of British Columbia. So it's interesting developments. I was at a meeting with Member of Parliament Ron McKinnon and members of the board. I was invited to that, along with CMHC. And it became, it was a fiery meeting. It was a little bit, there was loss of passion in it. And, but in the end, we, I think there was a general agreement that what has to transpire this week, part of which is a application, a court application by CMHC for full receivership, that whatever happens there, there could well be a solution that comes out of the community land trust, sorts of mechanisms, so. Anybody else? Did anyone actually want to hear that? The motion is to rece, I believe the motion is to receive. All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously? Adfirmment is moved by Councilor Marsden and seconded by Councilor Asmussen. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. We will now open the floor to questions from any members of the audience that are in attendance, who have questions on any items on today's agenda. Are there any questions from audience members on tonight's agenda? Any questions at all? Last chance, any questions? Thank you all for coming and for staying so late.